At 7:30 PM in the board meeting room. Okay, for the chairperson's report today, I will jump right in. Duke couldn't be here, but pretend that you see him. We're going to start with thanking Ms. Ackman. So these are Duke's words, "Thank you, Duke, for putting something together." He said, "First, I want to apologize for not being able to attend this evening's Board of Education meeting. I truly get frustrated when the day job with pay gets in the way of the Board of Ed job with a Darien High School parking lot for graduation, spot for graduation." Well, we all know that the nine people that sit around the board table multiple times a month between board meetings and committee meetings are here because of the incredible spirit of volunteerism that exists in this town and each of the individuals' passions for giving back to the community. At times, it can feel almost thankless, but then you think about the students and their relentless drive to learn, participate in theater, music, clubs, sports, and build lifelong friendships in a small community. Thinking about all that, you know you're helping build the future and create thoughtful, caring individuals that will make this world a better place. With all that in mind, I would like to express the board and the administration's gratitude and my personal thanks to Tara Ackman as she participates in her last meeting after two terms and six years on the Board of Education. Tara has that true spirit of volunteerism and, like all of us at this table, is a parent that has worked hard on this board while having children in the schools. If we true up to always focusing on the student, as Tara has said many times, our work becomes easier and stays focused. Schools exist for children, as we've all said many times. From board member to committee chair on finance, policy, and negotiation subcommittees to chair for three years, Tara has been a part of this board through superintendent searches, COVID shutdown, remote hybrid, and in-person learning, and kicked off the Oxbridge Building Project centered around removing the portables. With working remotely now commonplace, she has volunteered to take one of the portables for her remote office in her backyard. Duke indicates this might start a trend with the revenue stream, highly valuable Darien portables for remote office work. He continues, "I cannot thank Tara enough for appointing me to the Oxbridge Building Committee. It has truly been a great experience, and it's a third job. I now know that as co-chair of a school building committee with $7 in my pocket, I can get a cup of coffee at neat in town and be asked many questions by parents in the neat courtyard while trying to have morning coffee. Your portable is coming to your house soon as a thank you, Tara." Tara, "Thank you for your time, energy, and passion around our students over the last six years and for working hard to continue the tradition of volunteerism in this town and keeping the focus on our students and our great district." Thank you. And with that, Dr. Adley has some gifts for you, a plaque and a jacket, and his parent has kindly...
I'd just say I'd like to appreciate your personal professional friendship for your leadership on the superintendent committee that resulted in me being here. So I thank you for that. It's a very professional opportunity that you're a constant voice for all our students. It's actually pretty appropriate to be with young people here in the audience tonight. I'm thankful we have because you've been the voice for the video people during your complete tenure. Thank you. This is a wee plaque that you can decorate your room with. A little bit of blue garb for you.
For me, but when it's about me, it is. So, thank you. It has been an honor. There's been good times, bad times, hard times, but it has been a pleasure serving Darien. It has been a pleasure working behalf of the schools and the staff and the students I love so much, and I wish you all the best. And my advice is keep students top of mind, and you will be fine as you move forward. So, thank you very much.
With that, we'll move to public comment. Good evening. Should we start with a person? If anyone in person would like a public comment, please come up to the podium. You'll have three minutes to comment. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Deborah Ritchie, 16, Stony Brook Road, South. I am the co-chair for the Council for Darien School Parents, but these comments are mine and mine alone. Tara Ackman, I don't know where to begin. I just wanted to get up here and thank you. I want to thank you for the over four years that we had together on the board, for your leadership as chair for three years. I'm not sure what you thought of me when I first came into that room for the interview, but you weren't hard on me. You weren't easy, but that was good. And you know what? I think over the years, we always had that type of relationship where we knew we could be honest with one another, we could have fruitful discussions, but we both always put children first. I thank you for your service to our children, your dedication to our town, and I really hope this isn't the last we see of you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jason Rideout, and I'm a senior at Darien High School. And for three seasons, I've been doing track and field and cross-country, or throughout three years. And this year has been really important for me and for the team, and I've noticed there's been a big issue regarding our team and how we situate while waiting for meets. And one thing that'll really help our team would be a tent. And we ask you, the Board of Education, to approve this very generous gift from the Booster Club for an all-weather tent for the boys' cross-country and girls' cross-country and track and field teams. And this tent would really help us because it protects us from the rain and then really hot weather, and it would mean a lot to our teams for this to happen, and it would express our Darien pride. And I humbly ask you to help fulfill this desire.
Thank you for speaking.
Hello, my name is Megan Watrose. I live at 155 West Ave, and I'm here this evening because I have two children at Royal Elementary School, and I would like you to all be aware of the inappropriate material that their teacher is sharing with them. So I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about this inappropriate story that was read to my daughter's second grade class. The book is titled Julian is a Mermaid, and it's a story of a little boy who is transitioning to a little girl. And I just want to remind you, my daughter is seven years old, and this is a class of second graders. So I want to be clear, my concern is the age appropriateness of this type of gender-themed story for a class of second graders. I am all for and support diversity in a rich education. However, there should be boundaries with regards to sensitive subjects with our youngest learners. Education on changing gender for second graders should be completely off limits. And I'm looking at every single one of you because I just want to make sure that you hear me. We are talking about seven-year-old children being read a story about changing their gender. So I'm really perplexed as to why this book will be read to a class of seven-year-olds. And I'm also so curious, why would adults broach this topic with children? No answers, of course. And also, if this is the path the school wishes to take with the social and emotional learning, because that's the guise that they're hiding this under, then we should be able to opt out. So I do have the book here with me today, so I'd love to show you all about Julian and the mermaid. And we'll quickly go, I know we have a few minutes, so we don't have time for storytime like we do in my daughter's class, but here you can see Julian. So you all can see Julian, this little boy, as he strips down to his underwear and then grows hair as he's transitioning to his new life. Again, this is going to a group of seven-year-olds. And then we have Julian again, stripping down to his underwear, making himself a wig, putting on makeup, lipstick, and then he wraps a curtain around his waist with only his underwear to then be marched in a parade with a bunch of adults. So here is the book that's being shared with a bunch of seven-year-olds. This book clearly promotes gender ideas.
Ms. Watrose, you're almost out of time.
The book clearly promotes cross-gender ideas that is inappropriate for a group of second graders, and also the appropriateness of the boy and his underwear. Thank you for your time this evening, and I hope that you all really consider what we're sharing with our youngest learners.
Anyone else in person? I'll start with people online. Stacy T.A., you are unmuted and recognized.
Good evening. My name is Stacy T.A. I live at 10 Clocks Lane. My comments that I prepared tonight were something different, but I have to address the first little history lesson, the first gender-neutral bathroom in Darien was in an elementary school, and actually, Ms. McCammon, you yourself, helped advocate for that. My prepared comments tonight were to thank Mrs. Ackman for her service to the town. If there is one word I could use to describe Mrs. Ackman, it would be courage. Courage is the quality of being ready and willing to face negative situations. It's having the convictions to stand up and speak out for what one believes in, even when those around you stay silent and speak against you. It is standing up for those who need, who cannot stand up for themselves. It is the mental and moral strength to persevere. There is no better word to define Mrs. Ackman. Thank you for your service to our town and our children.
Ms. Carolina Magui, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, good evening. I want to take the opportunity tonight to personally thank our board member Tara Ackman for her service to our town, our schools, and our children. You are an example of integrity, preparation, knowledge, courage, and passion and compassion to us all. There has not been one meeting that I've watched or sat through where I did not believe how much better we are as a town to have you be part of this board. So Tara, I wish you a peaceful retirement from servicing our town, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you have done for us. We are definitely the winners for that, and I can only wish that the person that will come after you has our children and their well-being on top of their mind the way you have. You will be deeply missed. Thank you.
There are no more raised hands at this time. All right. With that, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming in person. Thank you to the Voice for being here. I want to recognize the event that happened this past weekend on Saturday out of the Darkness Community Walk. That was hosted by the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention. I just want to recognize again our young people for their participation in the event, the blue wave strong. There were many students and staff members who were present and to the administration of the high school. Thank you for attending the supportive event for our community members. So again, just want to recognize the group of students that were many more than the picture shows at this particular point. We do have a superheroes in concert Thursday, October 27th. This is DHS and the MS Middle School, eighth grade, I believe it's superheroes, and they may be in costume, or I think costumes are welcomed also here if you still would like to participate. Want to recognize our elementary schools for hosting particularly. We also went to the high school, actually, and middle school. We had a group of visitors from Netherlands, educators who were here to look at our gifted programming, and so we hosted them for the day. That was through UConn Talented and Gifted NEAG School of Education. So we're again pleased to support education internationally, locally, ensure our learnings and also learn from others. So they were very much impressed by the program. Just want to thank the community, the parents, for Friday's unexpected drill that we needed, and it wasn't really a drill, we put it in to secure schools. Thank the police department for their constant communication throughout the morning, for their assistance throughout the day. Thank you also to the parents for your understanding and cooperation, and I would certainly understand that in those situations that you'll be looking for regular communication, and certainly those are the things that we're trying to do. So thank you for our staff who are here this evening for up and down the system, for caring for our kids. To say it's unfortunate is an understatement because these types of events are disconcerting, to say the least, create anxiety for staff, for kids, and it's sad that we live in the times that we do, but we do, and we do everything to keep our students safe. So thank you. Want to say that Dr. Mark Brackett will be here for our parents. Dr. Brackett from Yale is the founder of the Ruler, I'll call it a program for want of a better term, which does support SEL. That will be open to all parents on December 6th. I think the CDC, CDSP is looking to support that program, so a request to accept that fund will come at the next board meeting. But the December 6th, it's extended to all parents up and down the system, K through 12. There'll be an opportunity for our parents to hear what our staff heard, a different sort of format at the start of the year, so we look forward to that. I want to thank Mark because Mark has dedicated his time and his talents to our district, known some of the struggles that we've had, and he's happy to come back. So it'll be a different type of winter celebration. CAPS Cape Convention is on November 18th and 19th. I'll send out some information. I hope we can get one or two board members to travel down to Mystic for that workshop. It's really, it's a conference that lasts Friday and into Saturday morning. The HHR Building Committee will be at the State tomorrow virtually with the SDR meeting. And upcoming board meetings are, we have a communications committee meeting this Friday, facilities, November 3rd, and curriculum, November 10th. Those conclude my own entries.
Thank you. Okay, next, the student representative reports. John Raskoff is out tonight, but Ms. Wajahakabodi, would you please report in?
Yeah, so good evening. This week is especially busy at Darien High School because it is the end of quarter one, so all our final grades and assessments are going in, and it's also a homecoming week. So we'll end the week with a pep rally on Friday as well as a battle of the bands Friday evening, and we'll have an orchestra concert this Thursday as well as a chorus concert on November 2nd. And this past weekend or on Sunday, Darien High School hosted the trunk-or-tree event, which went very, which was very successful, and many other clubs and fall sports teams participated. Name-day training has been completed, and name-day itself will be on November 3rd, and the DHS fall production of the Tempest will be open on November 17th.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I'll move to the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on October 11th, 2022? Ms. Worm first, Ms. Damaroni second, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Any board committee reports?
Last Thursday, the Finance Committee met. We will be reviewing one transfer that the committee recommended to pass and just review the surplus, year-to-date surplus through the last month.
The curriculum committee met last October 13th, and we had a great presentation by Jacqueline Samas on the wonderful things that the art department is doing, K to 12. It was lovely to see some of the work. It's fabulous what that department does. And the second item on our agenda was a review of how the selection of instructional materials, excuse me, from K to 12. Julie Droler talked about elementary literacy materials, and then Keith Killer from the Social Studies Department, and Frances Janoskow from English spoke to how they chose their instructional materials. And I encouraged parents to go back and watch our meeting. It was quite informative and informational.
Thank you. Alan mentioned the HHR Building Committee will be doing SDR, which is schematic design review with the State tomorrow. We're really excited to be at that point. We are, when we were last here with you, we were looking at schematic design here. We have made some adaptations to the final design for Curtis based on some of the feedback we got from the neighbors. So we're looking at relocating the parking and just trying to make sure that we minimize the visual impact that is still being tweaked as we speak. And we did sign off on the MAP design that you saw, the additional due diligence returned with the same design. We are, on that note, then seeking an additional appropriation. We're looking to be at the RTM on, actually, November 12th. So our next meeting is tomorrow night. We will be voting on the cost tomorrow night. And again, those two items that we're seeking additional appropriations for are the three roof projects from Henley Homes in Royal in preparation for the installation of photovoltaic panels and the additional construction work at the Curtis property. I say December or November. It's November 12th, RTM. Okay, presentations and discussions. A presentation of student distribution class size reports for the high school and middle sex. That's Mr. Rivera and Dr. Dalstrom.
I think Mr. Rivera is online.
Yeah, I'm here, Dr. Adley. How are you? Good evening, everyone. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to present tonight for our student distribution report. Can we go to the next slide, please? The one after that? I think the pretty consistent message for the high school data is that there hasn't been much that has changed from last year to this year. When you look at this first chart with the mean class size, you'll see that almost everything stayed pretty close. We had a slight increase in English, which brought our total average for our five academic areas from 18 to 19. I will say that that average is just at 19. It's a 18.52, so we round up to 19, but it's, you know, pretty consistent with what we've had in previous years. I would like to just highlight here in looking at the historical data, looking at the academic areas, except for our COVID year in 2021 where science was at an average of 16. We've had our science sections pretty consistently at 20 or 21. So that's something that we'll continue to explore and investigate as we move forward this year. And then down below are our mean class sizes for some of our elective areas. And again, in looking at this, if you look at our physical education numbers, again, those have been pretty consistent with at being at 23, 24. And when I say physical education, I also include our health classes, too. Those are the average class sizes for there. Many of these classes are above 24 at 28, 29, or even 30. So that's another area that we'll continue to kind of look at and explore moving forward. Next slide, please, Michelle. This next chart just reviews the average student load that each of our teachers have in their particular subject areas. So again, not a drastic change from year to year and fairly consistent. Next, Michelle? This has our overall distribution of class sizes below 16, 16 to 20, and above 20. So again, I want to make note of, you know, the COVID year of 20 to 21. And then what we have, what we find this year is starting to become more aligned with what I think we've seen historically. Next, Michelle? This is the number of classes that are below 10. So that number is pretty, again, consistent from last year. Now, many of these classes are support classes, so these are the lab classes that we offer in particular subject areas like math. In some instances, these are classes that have, we try to continue the sequencing for a class, so like a culminating AP class, let's say AP Spanish Lit. We want to make sure that we still run that, even though it might be a lower class size number. So we have also some classes in there that it's more of the culmination of the sequence of classes that we run that end up being a little bit long. But that's predominantly the classes that are represented here with the under 10. Next slide, please. And here is the distribution for our classes of 25 or more. This year, we only have one so far. It's in our science department. We have one neuroscience class at 25. We obviously didn't start it that way, but with students leveling down from classes and making schedule changes, sometimes we have to adjust. And through approval of the department, sometimes we do go over that number of 24, which is what we try to cap our science classes at. So we have that one class of 25. And then the last slide, Michelle, is our counselor load. So as you can see, it's been fairly consistent, and in comparing ourselves to other high schools in the dirt, again, it's very consistent with what our average counselor load is for other high schools, too, when you compare ourselves. And that's the end of the high school data, so I'll turn it over to Carolyn for the middle school data.
Hi, everyone. I'm Caitlin O'Keefe. I'm the assistant principal at Middle Sex. It's my first board meeting, very excited. You can go ahead and to the next slide. Okay, so right here, we have our average class sizes. They are similar to previous years, same trend as the high school, given the number of students and staff. You can see it's been fairly consistent over the past few years. So this slide accounts for our large and small classes at MMS. So world language, we do have a less than 10 to accommodate two students who are currently taking Spanish III. We have a math section with less than 10, and that's the result of some student movement after their placement exams and students moving up a level, which is exciting. We love that. We have three music sessions, sections that are at less than 10. These are ME sections, mostly due to the fact that it's held in one room in the building, and the max capacity for that room is 21, which makes scheduling a little bit challenging. So that's why we have three of those. We have one English section that is more than 24, and that's the result of a student enrolling late and needing services, and that was the only class that would fit into their schedule. We also have two music sections that are more than 24, and that's our eighth-grade band and eighth-grade chorus section. These sections are limited due to scheduling, and this is comparable to previous years at MMS. We also have 12 PE classes that are over 24, which again is also comparable to previous years due to the number of students and the fact that PE is a requirement. So this is our teacher average caseload. Again, trends are similar to previous years. The math average load is slightly lower based on the number of math teachers in the department and the teachers who are currently assigned to teach five classes. Our world language, we have 915 world language students. That is divided by 11.5 teachers due to the addition of our Mandarin teacher. And then the next slide is our counselors' caseload. So the caseload remains similar to 2021 and allow counselors to provide needed counseling supports to our students. Counselors five and six on this chart are for this year's sixth grade, which is the largest class at MMS. This is why they have larger caseloads. The difference between grade level counselor caseloads is also due to the alphabetical breakdown of students and students enrolling after caseloads were distributed. So counselor one and two is our grade seven, counselor three and four is grade eight, and five and six is our grade six counselors. Thank you.
Questions? Open it up to questions?
Ms. Ackman? To the counselors? Middle school or high? Middle school, I'm sorry. And I understand we do see late enrollment, and I know we try to keep it alphabetical. I'm just wondering, in some cases, almost 30 students is a lot to carry. Is there, is there no way to redistribute that? Because we do try to hold students with the same counselor throughout the year, so that 30 is going to carry over into next year as well? Is there not something we could do there?
I think the benefit there is that, you know, with some of those cases, you do want to not necessarily bump a student off of their current counselor that they had in sixth grade, too. So if you looked at the redistribution of that, but that's something that we can always look at as we enroll new students.
Yeah, I'm just looking at new enrollments, or maybe as much as we try to keep alphabetical. If the alphabetical isn't working, there's not a lot of X's and Z's.
Yes.
We just kind of even that out.
I'm just going to follow up on that. That's when we have a declining number of students, too, so we should have more flexibility that makes some shifts.
That was just my comment, too. Maybe next year, rejigger that a little bit, so it's a little more even. I feel badly for that one counselor, for those three counselors.
Well, I'm the 30 students.
Yeah.
I mean, sorry to just follow up. If you look at it, it's two counselors, one 60s and two in the 100s. It's not just one.
No, it's each grade has a.
It's the same part of the alphabet, too.
Yeah.
Staying on the subject of counselors, can we talk about high school counselors? We've heard wonderful things about the wellness center and in particular how the wellness center allows our students to see the counseling side of our counselors as opposed to just the college application side. Has that impacted, though, there any, have we had any complaints or difficulties with Has that impacted, though, there any of any, have we had any complaints or difficulties with serving students on the college side? Is it, are caseloads still working even with the wellness center?
Yeah, I mean, I think as always is the case, our counselors rise the challenge and, you know, are working harder, obviously, trying to meet the needs of all of our kids. But, you know, there's obviously discussions about looking at that model and what makes the most sense moving forward, so that none of the services that are counselors are delivering to our students end up falling on the wayside. So that definitely is something that we're looking at as we're adding on additional supports for our kids, especially during these difficult times. So we'll continue to look at that. But right now they're working hard. They're working their butts off without that.
Thank you. Then for both middle school and high school, can we walk through the impact of Mandarin on the different classes? So we can sort of see where we're looking at smaller classes in either Spanish or Mandarin or French and just talk about what we're seeing today and what we expect to see in the future at both levels, please.
Yeah, so we have two classes of Mandarin. Right now, we're anticipating more, because I think we do want to highlight our amazing Mandarin teacher at the elementary level and get them excited about taking Mandarin. As of right now, I think we've seen a huge change in enrollment numbers as far as Spanish or French is concerned. So that impact, I think, isn't really measurable yet, but long term, that's something that we definitely will want to look at.
Paul, do you have anything for?
I mean, again, from the high school standpoint, we're going to be similar to what we're saying from middle sex. We're going to take a look to see if those students follow through and continue taking that. And we'll have to make adjustments as we go forward if the enrollment does change. But I know Christina works, you know, very closely with that transition from eighth to ninth grade and with those recommendations that the eighth grade teachers will make. So we'll keep looking at it and see if there is any adjustments that we have to do. But right now, things are are pretty good and pretty steady. And again, some of the those lower numbers that you see in the report when it comes to world language, it's more of the culminating grades. So, you know, this is our first year that we have our AP Spanish Lit, so we have a small core of kids that are doing that. We have an upper level French class and an upper level Mandarin class that are also a little bit low. So I anticipate that those will start to fill in in the next couple of years as more and more kids continue with the program.
Anything else? Thank you both very much.
Thank you, Caitlin. Thank you, Paul. We did say that whenever we bring new courses to the board, next time we would also discuss the courses that haven't been running, just so, just in case you're following.
Okay. Report on testing SAT, ACT, AP, S VAC, and NGSS, Next Generation Science. Dr. Droller and Ms. Emanuelson.
Mrs. Droller.
But thank you.
Sorry, yes.
I'll take the promotion if you're handing out promotions.
That's fine. Good evening. It's so nice to be back in person. I think it's been a couple of years since I got to see everybody's faces. I'm Megan Emanuelson. I'm the very proud director of guidance for grade six through twelve, and I'm joined by Mrs. Dr. Droller. Julie Droller, who is our Director of Elementary Education. Julie and I are very pleased to have the opportunity to share the results of our district-wide testing from the twenty twenty one, twenty two school year. We're so proud of our talented students, our committed faculty, and our supportive school leaders. Our students once again delivered impressive results, certainly a reflection of the hard work of both students and staff. This report will include results from both the state mandated testing in grades K twelve, as well as the optional testing that our high school students can use in their college admissions process. We'll first present the data in two parts. First, we'll share the results of the state mandated testing, and then I'll have the pleasure of sharing all the high school admissions testing. So I'm going to turn it over to Julie for the K eight report.
Thank you, Megan. So as you know, these are the assessments that we'll be discussing this evening. Smarter Balance Assessment is an annual standardized measure that provides a snapshot of student progress aligned to the Connecticut Common Core standards in ELA and mathematics. Students earn a scale score of two thousand to three thousand points and an overall achievement level. And these scores represent three areas of skills and knowledge. In English Language Arts, it's reading, listening, and writing, research inquiry. In mathematics, it's concepts and procedures, problem solving and data analysis, and communicating reasoning. These scores, along with other assessments, inform our instructional decisions to support future learning. And I spoke about the four levels. I know you've seen this before. Level three and level four are what we look at to talk about students who are at or above standard. So we'll start with mathematics. As Megan said, strong performance, eighty percent of our students were at or above goal overall. And you can see stable performance throughout the because of significant curriculum changes that we've made. Our professional development this year is really focused on unpacking standards that align with these high stakes assessments. So this is a four-year historical data, and overall, there's a return to pre pandemic performance levels. So again, strong and steady performance over time by grade and by cohort. This is the DIRG comparison for mathematics, and you'll also see here that we are overall at the top end of our DIRG. So we're proud of that. Bless you. Same thing with ELA, strong district performance, eighty one percent of our students overall were at or above goal. Impressive and consistent performance by grade. Particularly, grade five is a highlight, and professional development continues to support standards and incorporating research around the science of reading, which, although that's the primary grades, definitely impacts all of our students. Again, our historical data, you can see there's an overall return to pre pandemic performance and strong and steady by grade and by cohort. For the DIRG comparison for ELA, you'll see the same thing. We are at the higher end of our DIRG consistently. So just to summarize, strong and consistent, strength within the DIRG. Continue closer analysis of our interim assessment data in PLCs. That's really a focus for us this year. And embedding text language in our core instruction throughout the year. So really focusing on that academic vocabulary to help our students. The Next Generation Science standards are given in grades five, eight, and eleven. Fifth grade was the highest in three years. So this is the third year of the Next Generation Science standard assessment. Eleventh grade increased over last year, and teachers are, our professional development continues to support three dimensional learning to support the NGSS standards. Again, this is our historical trend for the three year. Fifth grade achievement was the highest in three years. And eleventh grade performance increased over last year. So our DIRG comparison, what you'll notice on this, and again, strength within the DIRG. Grade, Easton Reading, Region Nine, have one high school, Joel Barlow, so that's combined into one grade. The data was suppressed in eighth grade for confidentiality. I did get the scores for Easton, and they were fifty six percent. So I summarized some of the highlights. We are continuing to analyze data to identify strengths and areas of growth that inform our instruction and curriculum. We're embedding the NGSS interim assessments into instruction and assessment. There are some more interim assessments that teachers are using this year. In middle sex, the teachers have incorporated these interim assessments into their professional development and evaluation plans, goal plans. And we are continuing to look at and revise curricular units to support the integration of three dimensional learning, particularly at the secondary level. And as I said before, professional development in three dimensional learning. I don't know if you want to pause now for any questions before we go on.
Start with middle school, I think. Yeah. So I noticed that that eighth grade class seems to be, you know, when you look at the scores, LA, math, science, they are not doing as well as the others. Are, those are kids that are now, you know, COVID hit when they were in sixth grade. Now they're freshmen. Are we, are we looking at them and making sure they are getting the support they need?
I would say that we are absolutely looking at that data, and eighth grade, historically, there is always a dip in eighth grade. I was speaking to Dr. Dalstrom about that actually today. But yes, we are, we are looking at our data and looking at how the kids are doing.
Just to follow up on that, you always, I think you said you see typically see a dip in eighth grade. Do you have any color on why that's occurring? I mean, you also look across the DIRG, and it seems like.
That is, that is typical, and you probably heard, you know, the news reports about the NAEP testing, that eighth grade performance was low. I, the only thing that, you know, perhaps we could say is maybe just testing fatigue and you know, they're just ready to move on.
The other thing that happens with eighth grade, especially in math, because we have so many students that are accelerating at least one grade level by the time they've hit eighth grade, is they're actually not focusing on eighth grade standards in eighth grade. So one part is, okay, so they did that last year. Why don't they know it if they did it last year? But it just goes to speak to, thinking about our, our math acceleration report that'll be coming soon to a board event meeting near you, is some students are moving so fast, are they actually learning the math, or is it a crunch and they temporarily know it? So one of the thoughts, one of the wonders that I have as I'm looking at this data is if these are students that are largely accelerated by one grade level by the time they're there, how do we have a lower number that are not hitting the state assessment? So we are looking at that pretty closely.
Thank you. The, these are administered in May generally, right? So the fatigue, the testing fatigue may be very real. I've had a couple of eighth graders be pretty done with middle school by, by May of eighth grade. I wanted to ask you, Julie, if you could talk a little bit to what kinds of instructional decisions are informed by things like the results. I know it says along with other educational inputs, but smarter balanced assessments, just to dimensionalize that some.
Um, a lot of our, the way we group kids, you know, looking at at which students were below and in what area. So we have those three areas of knowledge and skills. And we can drill down a little bit to see if it's reading, listening. And then because we don't really see the test, it doesn't tell us how kids performed, but we know we can use the interim assessments to dig deeper and see how they responded and support them that way. So it's really just like telling us to look further in those small group.
It can also be an indicator for where we might have some curriculum work to do if we see trends over time. So sometimes you have a unique cohort of students, but if you're seeing eighth grade performance consistently low over time, then it's likely a curricular issue for us to look at.
I'm just building up that. Do you have any specifics that you've found through this data or no?
Not yet. The, we're certainly continuing to do a deeper look in it, but when you look at eighth grade, just comparing the past two years, if we had a third year and we don't see an increase, then we'd say, okay, we have three years. There's kind of a plateau happening. That means we need to take a look at what's happening in curriculum.
So I'm also curious about middle school. I was looking at slides six and nine. Both mathematics and ELA data, six through eight is not quite as strong in their historical performance as the elementary schools are. I know we did a lot. We hired literacy coaches, you know, to come and support our middle schools and, excuse me, our elementary schools. And the elementary schools are more of a, by nature, they're wraparound environment. So I just, I recognize that, you know, it is COVID, but I do, would love to hear about some of the things that, more specifically, I think some of the things that you've turned up and you think we want to do. It could be that it's a cohort, but it's a cohort at COVID. So you know, it looks like that entire group in the middle school.
And I know that the middle school is, is really looking very closely at this data. So I think that they could probably get back to you and give you more information.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I just had one thing to Julie's point also. I don't want to give away Dr. Dalstrom's, she referred herself as she's a data nerd as well. So I don't want, I don't want to steal your thunder, Carolyn, okay? But I know that she's working in PLCs and her PD on that, working at really analyzing the data.
Great. Thank you.
Sorry, Carolyn.
She's outed.
Thank you. I appreciate, as always, the conciseness for the oral presentation in front of the board, but for the board packet, looking through these, I see this conclusion, we have strong and steady performance. I'm just looking at these bar graphs. Aside from the fifth grade cohort, I don't see anything strong or steady. It looks like a pretty steady decline across the other five. So I'd really love to see some numbers and data behind this to be able to understand how we got to that conclusion. Because I don't see it, just looking at this chart, and unfortunately, I didn't have the numbers, so maybe it's just perspective is off, but I don't see that this looks strong or steady. The other question is, we have the DIRG comparison, seems like we are pretty steadily in third place, not at the top. So I'm just curious how we think about those rankings. And in terms of conclusions we may come away with here, how we're going to look at this. And I guess, you know, some of this is in process and crunching the numbers, but I hope we're not going to walk away with this just thinking we have to teach to a test or punch up some scores. Seems like there's maybe some undergirding and some foundational work that's not getting done, and maybe that's why people are coming a year out and not really having to recall or being able to perform as we liken to. So this, to me, is very concerning. You know, I know we have great teachers, great staff. We have all kinds of people leading the curriculum teams and working on where we are. But this does not look like a very strong or steady trend, and it's quite concerning. I look forward to seeing the data behind it.
Not at this time. There'll be another public comment session at the end of the meeting, and we'd love for you to come and speak at that time, please.
Yes. So I just want to, I want to be careful as we talk about these eighth graders who are now ninth graders and defining them as anything based on one test. I think that the scores show that clearly there is a dip. It's, it's interesting to see it historically, but I worry that we're saying they took this test, so that defines them as a low performing group or a lower performing group. It's a test on a day on a cohort that went through really formative years, missing a year plus of school. I would be interested in understanding the supports they're receiving to make sure that they're prepared for the rigor of our high school. Our high school shows is extremely rigorous. But I just worry that we're defining an entire grade of school based on the standardized test. So I think that we, we need to understand them. We need to understand the supports around them, and we need to understand it's a snapshot in time. So I think I had some of the same questions that were asked around here. I just want to put that caveat on it, that it is a test one week in May.
Ms. Emanuelson. So I think you're up.
I confess to Julie that I'm not good at speaking and clicking at the same time, so she's offered to be my assistant. We could go for the next. Thank you. So in addition to the NGSS, our Connecticut SAT School Day is the state mandated test that all of our juniors take. And then some of the optional tests that students have the opportunity to take at the high school level are the SAT and ACTs, which generally take place on Saturdays. And then our AP exams, which are offered in May. Next slide, please. So as we start going into the high school data, we're going to be discussing Connecticut SAT School Day, National ACT and SAT and RAP. I do want to be, make a note that we're going to be discussing two different sets of SAT data, and I want to clarify that from the beginning because it's two different cohorts of kids. And so we'll be reviewing the Connecticut SAT School Day data, which are our current seniors. And then the SAT national data is actually our class of twenty twenty two that just graduated. And so we'll review both of those, but you really can't compare them. They're two different cohorts of kids. So next slide, please. So this is the Connecticut SAT school, yup, Connecticut SAT School Day was given in March of twenty twenty two. The test assesses English and math. It is a usable score for college admissions. This past year, the test was administered digitally for the first time. About ninety seven percent of our juniors took the test, and our scores remain strong and well above the DIRG and state average. Nearly ninety percent met or exceeded the college board benchmarks in ELA, and almost eighty three percent met or exceeded in math. College Board has established them benchmarks through their own study, and the benchmarks that are established say that their study says it would be, basically give students a seventy five percent chance of earning a C or better in a call, an entry level college course in that content area. This year, the juniors will take the test on. This year, the juniors will take the test on March 22. So this slide that you're looking at shows the Durg A districts and the ELA and math scores for each on our, again, on our Connecticut SAT School Day. Our juniors once again performed very, very well. The scores are consistent with past years, and we remain near the very top of our Durg. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the difference, the change between this year's scores and the last time that we had scores that we could compare. So we put in everybody's scores from 18, 19. And this is the change. And as you can see, our scores have remained really stable. Next slide, please. So shifting away from the Connecticut State mandated test to the college admission testing, these tests are optional for students as they choose the exams that they feel are the best reflection of their knowledge and their skills. So as you can see, many members of the class of 2022 chose to take these tests. So the large percentage of students who took the SAT also includes the state mandated Connecticut SAT School Day that they took the year before. Next slide, please. This is again where we shift that cohort from the SAT School Day to the national data. So now we're talking about our class of 2022 graduates. And the way that SAT and ACT report this data is if a student took the test more than once, they use their last score. So this is not necessarily an average. The scores that are used for these numbers are the last test that a student took. So if they took it once, that's the score they use. If they took it five times, it's not an average of those five tests. It's the last time that they took it. I have yet to get an explanation on why they do that. So this is a three year comparison. And I just made a little asterisk in 20 and 21. And as you know, the the opportunities there were somewhat limited. Class of 2020, for the most part at that point, and when COVID hit, had completed most of their testing. In 21, as you might recall, we really went out of our way to provide on campus opportunities for students to get their testing in. But it's just worth noting that testing was a little wonky in those years. But as you can see, for the most part, you know, very, very, it's very similar scores across across time. Next slide, please. So these are our ACT scores. And as you may know, ACT is scored on a one to 36 score, has four sections, English, reading, math, and science, with an optional writing section. The composite score is an average of the four sections. Colleges and universities across the country standardly accept an ACT or an SAT in college admission. This is a three year comparison, and as you can see, scores have remained pretty strong and stable over time. Next slide, please. This is our our high school's comparison to both state and national averages. So we remain well above state and national averages in each area, and I'm a composite. And moving on to APs. So APs are, I'm sorry, can you go to the next slide, please? Just, and I'm sorry, this got formatted a little bit funky. We do offer 23 courses at the high school. AP exams are given in May of each year, near the end of the AP course. They are designed to assess mastery of content in a subject specific college level curriculum. The scores are reported on a scale of one to five, with a three being considered qualified to receive college credit or placement based on that score. Most of these exams are two to three hours in length. This past year, we were all paper pencil after having a little bit of a combination of digital exams in the previous year. So last year was all paper pencil. We also had students self study for several additional exams and for courses that we do not offer. These included AP Chinese, AP Psychology, and AP Physics 1, which is algebra based. Students do not need to be enrolled in an AP course to take an exam. A number of colleges have moved away from granting actual credit for AP scores, and sometimes they're using them for placement. But the great news is that Connecticut State has passed a law a few years ago that any public university in Connecticut will award credit for a three or better. So that's a nice opportunity for our kids. Next slide, please. This is our five year comparison. I just think it's so incredibly impressive that 91% of almost 1,100 exams scored a three or better last year. And that is pretty consistent over the last five years. So we do really, really well on these tests. Our kids and our teachers work so hard, and I think they get a lot out of these courses. So our enrollment numbers were very similar. The number of exams our students took were similar, and the performance remains really strong as well. Next slide, please. I do want to take a moment to clarify this slide. This is a participation slide sort of under their access and equity report. So if you just take the 2022 column, the the number that's next to the graduating class, 67.8, that represents the number, the percentage of students in the class of 2022 that scored a three or better on an AP exam anytime during high school. So that's the grad class number. When it says 12th grade, 57.9% of students scored a three or better in 12th grade, 59.8 in 11th grade. So the grad class sort of says anytime in high school, and then the grades are specific to the grades that they were in. So I think that's, those are also very impressive numbers. And then finally, these are our planned district testing dates for 2022, 2023, for our SBAs, NGSS, Connecticut SAT School Day. And then APs will be the first two weeks of May. So I think Julie's answered probably her her share of questions, but I'm certainly happy to take any questions on the high school side. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah. So first off, thank you for clarifying the the differences between the SATs, because that was my first question. My second question is, in the in the AP, and you've shown five year score trends, the SAT only showed three. So going back two more years and non-COVID, true non-COVID years. How are SAT scores comparatively to today?
Very similar. I'm happy to give you those numbers if that's helpful, but they would be nominally different.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're always, it always like, it's amazing to me that our students are averaging above a 600 in every section. That's really impressive. And that's been, I think, for as long as I've been in this role. But I'm happy to get the numbers for you if that would be helpful.
And then my last question is, in the the AP exams in 2018, we had, we have a score of 46.6 in 11th grade, and it's jumped on 60%. Sorry, slide, I don't have this number. The participation number on AP.
So no, the last slide, I think it was the participation slide.
Yeah, this slide. So I think it's tremendous accomplishment to go from 46% of students who have a three or better to almost 60% in 11th grade. Is that due to taking more more options and having AP Ling, AP Lang and AP Lang? And people are taking these in 11th grade and there's more options? Or are we doing a better job of teaching 11th graders or what?
Are you, I'm sorry, you're looking from 10th to 11th?
I'm looking at 2018, it's 46.6.
Yes.
And in 2022, we're at 60 or 59.8. Correct?
Yes.
So so in 2018, only 45%, 46, and now we're at 60.
Yes. I have not done a deep dive on that. We did add a couple of courses. That would be as part of the reason the 10th grade is so low is there's very few courses that sophomores have have access to. So there were, I I could go back. We have added a couple of courses that I can think of in in that time that 11th graders would have access to. But I haven't done a deep dive on the 11th grade data from 2018 to 2022. Yeah.
Forty six to then 55.
Yep.
So I don't know if it's just a.
Yeah, and that's interesting, because the senior data is similar.
Mm hmm. Yeah. Dennis, I think you're absolutely right. AP Lit and Lang.
I think.
Yeah. I have a question. Yes, I appreciate all the the numbers, the data. Do you ever show us how, what the percentages of who got five, not who, percentage of fives and fours? Because, you know, looking at like top schools, threes, right, are.
Yeah. I certainly could.
I'm not saying.
Yes, I I understand. Yeah, I cer- I certainly could. It's it's really high and quite and quite a bit higher than than most of the schools in our Durg. We do the three because that's what colleges consider to be qualified. So but the fours and fives, I agree. And when we look at that, it's 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 the majority of that 91% were in the fours and the fives.
What I was kind of curious about.
Yep, happy to send that to you.
Thank you.
A couple of teachers at Teacher Parent Teacher Night were happy to share those statistics.
I bet, yes. But you are correct, the vast majority of those tests were fours and fives.
Since we're getting a little geeky here on data, Chris.
We're getting a little, I'm sorry, you said what? What did you say?
Since we're getting a little geeky on the data.
Oh, geeky. I'm not a data nerd like Dr. Dolestrom.
The thought here, which wouldn't be in this presentation, but just thinking out loud, do we do any sort of similar aggregation we'll be seeing in terms of GPA and performance? So we could map actual, you know, class grades versus where we are in the testing? And if you don't have it now, that's fine. I'm just, I know we're going to have more on this to come. I just know that's something we could see it be kind of interesting to think.
It's it's not how we use GPA and how we've historically looked at GPA. That would be a big change.
Okay. Just a broad aggregated by grade sort of trend line? Or maybe there's distributions there or we have curves, I don't know.
Yeah, I can take a look.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
It has been, it has been dried up and symmetrical, and so on a particular model like that. There's a, there's a model exists to replicate if we needed to do that. But I'm not so sure at the end of the day that the productivity of it, but but there is a problem to replicate. I was just going to ask, why don't you, wouldn't you find that kind of analysis useful without?
I'm not saying. We have, our scores are traditionally so high that it's a matter of what would, what are we learning from it? What would the return be? There's also scores that the college board gives called AP potential. That shows the number of students that could be successful if they took an AP course. But when we have as many taking them, the return there isn't something that we've had to do, but we certainly can.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So one of the reasons that we have not always looked at that correlation is that the GPA is owned by us. And the AP scores, while we take AP courses, there's been like a long history of outside tutoring. Now, you could argue there's tutoring, as I have, around GPAs for years as well. But that has been a conversation before, that there are actually preparatory classes for SATs, ACTs, AP classes that might not correlate or may skew the correlation between GPA and AP. I don't know whether we want to look at it differently. I'm not putting a value judgment on it, but that has been a conversation before, the prep that goes into specific testing versus the day to day classroom, although arguably there's fair amount of prep that goes into that.
I'll just add, one of the subgroups of the Equity Team, they are looking closely at SAT performance over time and trying to look at the profiles of what is the makeup of students who score at certain levels. But again, we're skewed in a way that it's hard to get to the story of of the why, so.
And the only thing I would add to that is we're still living in a majority test optional world. And I think a large reason is because even the colleges are discovering that that's not necessarily predictive of success in college, which is why they're not choosing to return post-COVID to to standardized testing. And so as we start to make correlations and relationships, like even the colleges are moving away from making those correlations in terms of success. So I would just add that that we're still in a vast majority test optional world as well, which has been a really nice opportunity for our kids, because, you know, as Ms. Ockman said, it's one day, it's one test. And so it's nice that a lot of colleges are giving opportunities to kids to not be defined by that one number.
I have a quick question. So the C, the Connecticut SAT Day is mandated by the state, that's for juniors.
Correct.
But 96.7% took it. So what happened to the 3.3?
So there were some kids that were sick. To be honest, there were some kids that are ACT test takers or knew they wouldn't be submitted test scores, or it was an anxiety provoking event, and I chose not to drag them into school. Well, so we will, we will strongly, strongly always encourage a makeup over a few days. And so we were able to capture a few students through makeup testing. And so we were really happy to to hit our our state mandate of 95%. But we'll always have a couple of percentages for a variety of reasons that don't take the test.
I think that 95% is important, because when schools get their school performance index, you get full credit if you have 95% hit that threshold.
And I think getting 95% of 16 year olds to do anything is like, I was, I was doing a jig that day. It was super proud, super proud day for me.
Do we have a percentage of kids who also take alternative assessments? Yeah. Anything else?
I'd just like to thank you and also thank the board for your thoughtful questions tonight. I think what data does, and one of the things that data does is let you ask more questions. I find your your questions and your comments insightful. Actually, I find them more helpful than the Secretary of State Education comments that said it was appalling and unacceptable. The NAEP scores in yes, four through eight in Connecticut and the nation drop. I I just find that an unfortunate statement to make, given what everybody has been living through. My educators have been living through, my children have been living through. But but I certainly appreciate our board's questions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
That will move to discussion and possible action on proposed Middlesex and Darian High School field trips. Dr. Tranberg, Dr. Dolestrom, Ms. Dunn, and Ms. Mauricio.
Good evening, everyone. And thank you for receiving our applications for our special field trips. I would love to say that these are outstanding opportunities for our students every year to compete in a variety of different fields. They are academic experiences and social experiences. And I want to say a special thank you to our advisors who take weekends and weeks away from their families to be with our students to participate in these great opportunities. We're proud of them, not only for the competition side of this, but for how beautifully they represent Darian High School and our community. So the first five trips are trips that you have seen each year. I don't think I need to go through all the pages of the applications, but these are trips that our students have taken, enjoyed, and have been a really important culminating experience for them. There is a typo I caught before I came over here on the DECA trip. It is not from April 22 to the 28. That would be a long three days. It's actually to the 26. If there aren't any questions on those, I will introduce Colleen and Christina. Colleen is introducing a slightly new trip, which is the Jazz Band trip to Philadelphia. And Christina is here to talk about some slight changes to the proposal you've already approved for the ELA trip, which will take place in July. Colleen?
Thank you.
Hello, thank you. So I already presented the the main trips that the music department is taking. So it's a travel year for orchestra and chorus officially. However, John Grauer and the Jazz Band discovered that they would be highly qualified to perform at a or compete in a national festival this year based on the quality of their program and the interest of the students in that, in this particular cohort. So we found a festival in Philadelphia that the students and Jonathan would like to perform in. And so we'd like to take that opportunity to do so. The good news is it's no time out of school. It's simply a Saturday and Sunday in Philadelphia with a performance. And then they would have an opportunity to actually perform right outside of Independence Hall and do some, do some touring. So we thought it would be a nice opportunity for the Jazz Band, first of all, to perform and perform well and hopefully come away with some sort of recognition for their performance, but also to have some additional time together as a mostly senior cohort in jazz band.
Any questions about the jazz trip? Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Christina Mauricio. For those of you who don't know me, I am just requesting approval for changes to the Italy Leadership Summit in the summer. So students aren't going to be missing any school days. As you know, from my previous presentations, the dates are in July, after the first week of July, but they are tentative pending final travel arrangements being made. What we are doing is shifting the focus to it just being a cultural immersion trip to Italy, which will be interesting for students that take Latin, that are interested in history, the classics, Roman and Italian culture, and shortening the trip by a couple of days to remove the Leadership Summit piece of it. The number of students will also vary, because the enrollment for the trip will be open until February for this trip. And so we anticipate that 20 students will go, but it could be fewer or it could be more.
Any questions? What is the reason for the change?
So there are several reasons for the change. So right now, the trip as it currently is designed, there are not enough students enrolled to go. And we are changing it to hopefully attract more students to sign up on the trip. And we also conducted a survey for 2023, 2024 travel, which I will be back and you will see me next month, hopefully, for the trips for the following school year. And on that survey, there was a question about, a question with several types of answers. Do, does your family want to travel in the summer? Is your family interested in leadership summits? Are you interested in? Are you interested in a trip to Italy that is just an Italy trip? Or are you interested in a trip to Italy that has a leadership summit component? And we found that the results of the survey indicated that people were very interested in sending their children on a cultural immersion trip that had more of a focus on the classics and the potential of studying Latin the way, you know, you're seeing all the things that you're seeing in class in person, instead of having the focus be on the conference, which is the last three days of the trip. And the length of the trip is also very limiting. The leadership summits tend to be 14 to 15 days long, whereas the cultural immersion trips are between 10 and 12, similar to the summer, the April format.
Thank you for your responsiveness. Anything else? Okay. With that.
And we have one little.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry.
The trip that I'm presenting for Middlesex is the Nationals for Quiz Bowl in May, for our Quiz Bowl to travel to Chicago to compete. Just so you know, last year we had two teams that placed 13th in the nation, and we're hoping to go back and show them what rock stars our students are again.
Any questions? Okay. With that, may I have a motion to approve?
I'm sorry.
I think those are high, that those are really high school ones.
The, yeah, so ours is Chicago. Yes. Middle school goes to Chicago, yep.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the following field trips? Middlesex, Quiz Bowl National Championship, and Darian High School, Model UN, Model Congress, Quiz Bowl, DEC International Career Development Conference, National Technology Student Association Conference, National Jazz Festival, and World Language Trip to Italy. Mr. Brown, second, Ms. Worm, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much.
Okay. Discussion and possible exceptions, acceptance of contemplative gifts for Darian High School Athletic Department. Mr. Manfredonia.
Good evening, everyone. You have a couple donations to contemplate and discuss tonight. The first, as Jason Wright out very eloquently put, are two donations from the Blue Wave Booster Club. They are to provide tents for both the boys' and girls' cross-country team, to have them for both home and away meets, keep them out of the elements, rain, sun. It's also acts as an identifier where the teams will be meeting when they travel for big events such as the SEAC competition. So I ask you to consider and approve the tents for the Blue Wave Booster Club for the boys' and girls' cross-country teams.
Take them as a badge, so, but any questions about it first? Thank you. I just, I couldn't read on the, it says boys' cross-country, weather, tent, and something, team?
It's a team bag. I think the bag comes along with the tent.
Got it. Thank you.
Can this tent also be used by the boys' and girls' track and field teams?
Yeah, they can use by any, any team, any season, but it'll, it will say, it'll identify as boys' and girls' cross-country on the tent.
But it's not exclusive to that?
Nope.
Perfect.
All right. Next donation, please.
The next donation is the annual approved donation that you've seen before for the football team. They had a fundraiser a few weeks ago with donations from various families that play for the THS football team. You can see there a list of the donations per family. And then the next page, I believe, is how the team would like to use the money to support the boys on the team, both on and off the field.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Not a question, just a comment. Wanted to say thank you very much to the parents of town for the generosity, both the Booster Club and football players. Thank you.
I won't repeat it. Thank you very much. To both groups. With that, may I have a motion to approve? Let me read it correctly. Lost my motions. Motion, motion to accept the contemplative gifts for the Darian High School Athletic Department. Ms. Worm, second, Mr. Maroni, all those in favor. All right. Update on implementation of the district's strategic plan, board goals, and diversity, equity, and inclusion.
So the board may recall, thank you, Chris, the board may recall that we decided to collapse this presentation into one, where it would be the board, the strategic goals, the board goals, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. Since the diversity, equity, and inclusion is incorporated into the, into the strategic plan, you'll see that that's played out pretty significantly in the strategic, in the strategic plan, the actions and the follow-up. So I will touch on a couple of, just, just a couple of big things and progress. So we've been in school, what, about eight weeks or so? So we've made some nice progress. So regarding goal number one for the board, I'll just talk about the actions that the board has taken recently around all the safety and security improvements. So I won't deliberate on those, but I'll just mention those. A support system to address mental health and wellness. Again, the board has had updates from the, from the high school, middle school. It'll have an update. The next agenda item is another update on that matter. We've also taken action for a director of mental health. Those interviews, both for those and the security officers, we're lining those up at this particular point, ready for the interview process. Overseas stage two of the strategic plan. Well, this, this is kind of the regular monitoring is part of that particular process. And the, the regular updates are provided to the board. The budget itself also will be aligned to the strategic plan. Communications, the communications committee has got up and running. So that was one of the big steps to take place. Various, just other various updates include dedicated websites for school security, mental health, and DEI work. I'll stop, I'll stop there for the board, unless you have any questions. Otherwise, I'll just write the strategic plan.
Any questions on the board goals? Alan, do we have a date on when we'll get updated on the KERMA?
The KERMA will be coming to meet with the administration on November 2nd. So after, I'll have to find out what, what's the outcome of that meeting, because there, there is feedback that we need to give them too. So they will be meeting November 2nd with our administration. Thereafter, we'll schedule something with the board.
Thank you.
So then enhancing the teach and learn after the strategic plan. The big, the big takeaway here is the teaching and learning principles that have been drafted and will be, are going to be reviewed by the PDAC Committee. That's, that's, that's one of the biggest takeaways that we've progressed, that we've made towards goal one. Goal two on DEI, we've had two meetings thus far. The Mark Brackett also to support the wellness and the updates to the websites regarding DEI work. Development balance definition of the portrait of a graduate. I wanted to just thank, I think Alan's still here, or she's not? She just, well, I'm going to wrap it up. I want to thank her for her and her staff, for her leadership through the NEAS visitation, because that went extremely well. But we're also building curricular competencies around the portrait of a graduate attributes. And we're also talking development right now, language on the elementary language to actually support the development of these attributes characteristics through K through 12. Expanding the professional capacity of the staff. One I haven't mentioned there, which I, I think it's worth mentioning. The board may not want to mention it as a, as a progress, it's contract negotiations. I know that they're still under discussion, but the whole, the negotiation process is an opportunity to support, to support the professional capacity of the staff. I haven't mentioned it there because it hasn't been, it didn't get ratified yet, approved for the board yet. And then developing enhanced communication systems. Again, some of this is a wee bit redundant, but to some degree, it may not be surprising because there is some redundancy between board goals, strategic plans, and so on and so forth. So the development of communication, again, that committee is one of the major, bigger, biggest developments that have taken place and some improvements to the website. Those, those are the takeaways. I guess goal seven, I would say, if it's, the goal seven, the big thing, there's the transition to the BOID that went relatively smoothly at the high school. And then goal six was the facilitation. We've done a lot of work. I just wanted to take a moment, just like depositing that for a second, because the work the board has done there has been tremendous in terms of all of these schools. And there's tremendous excitement that's engendered by the staff and the parents around these particular projects. So again, thank you for that, but those contribute to goals six and seven. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any more questions?
Sorry, Alan, just following up on the accreditation. He asks, is there a criteria or matrix or grid or final report or something that come out of the board can see? Just curious to know what goes into that process.
Yeah, the, the spring of 24 is really the visit that the, the high school had done the draft of, of what they see the strengths and weaknesses are. So they have to work, they have to sort of work on those before the visiting committee comes back in the spring of 24, and then the, the official report is issued after the spring of 24.
Where, where we are in the process now, there's no status or, I'm just, I'm curious honestly, what, what goes into this? Or what, what they cover, what they're looking for, like, just have that visibility into it, so that's like.
You know, I'll give you a further update on some, some of what they call standards, right? They've reduced it, but the, the process for the NEAS visit now is much less than it used to be.
Right.
So it's sort of reduced, but it does, basically, it, the report itself, the staff have identified experiences, programs that they would like to move forward on around the standards. I can, I can share the last presentation there, because I think you might find that, that that might be helpful, just to give you a status update. The actual report, we don't see, the interim report, we don't see that the staff has done until the end process of, just spring of 24.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Alan.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. On goal three, developing a balanced definition of student success through the portrait of the graduate, the, developing a system pre-K to 12 to measure the competencies of the portrait of a graduate. Where are we on that, or when might we discuss that in greater detail?
Well, that's one of the, that's, that's one of the ones that we haven't done in eight, in the start of the eight weeks of, of start of school. So it's, that is, that is one of the hardest things that we're going to have to do, right? Because we'll have to develop this understanding of what it means at the, at the elementary level through K, through system, K through 12. Because I don't know about a timeline for that. I'd be reluctant to give the timeline for that just at the moment, but.
Well, the next step is the language piece. So in, if you remember the way the portrait of a graduate works there, the competencies that go across the top, and then there's a, I think it's a seven by seven questions. So the way that we built it into the new curriculum platform is that there's, there's 49 indicators to show that students have demonstrated those competencies over time. And so after that language piece is done, the next step would be to identify in the curriculum, where do students have those experiences to work toward mastery? So the, that's how it was described to the, during the NEAS visit as well. So we should be further along when they're here next spring. And hopefully, we'll get to a place where we're showing at least two times during students' experience where they're measuring each of those 49 attributes.
We will make some inroads this year because it's been a year or two ago.
Right. That's exciting. It's a Herculean task and something we're not used to measuring.
The committees, the visiting committees' initial response to the approach was very positive.
Just following up on that, Chris, is, is that a large burden to implement for the educators? I mean, you call it Herculean, so I'm just trying to.
So ideally, many of those attributes are things that are already present in our curriculum. So we're finding where do those exist and elevating them enough and putting them in a place that we can go back to and look at all of those pieces over the students' experience. So not only that they've done them, but could we possibly look at those 98 items all at once when a student's sitting here?
So a big part of the task is identifying those 98 factors. Okay, thank you.
Chris, you talked about a timeline for EduPlanet, the curriculum committee. Do you want to, or just remind us of what it is here?
So the idea was, so we have finishing year one, so it was a four-year rollout of everything being transferred over. We're moving at a faster rate than that, so I'm optimistic that it won't take four. But just giving the space in case it does.
Thank you. Anything else? Right.
Thank you.
Moving on to the mental health and wellness update, Dr. Adley and Dr. McCarthy.
I don't know if Dr. McCarthy is on this evening, but if he is, he can, I'll, I'll certainly happy to speak. But I don't know if Scott is on the screen or not. Oh, I think he's teaching a class.
Oh. Okay, Dr. Adley.
Yes, we'll, we'll give the update here. So we appreciate, I think that the board has heard some of the things from our students and also from our administration, from the Wellness Center and the Wellness Weekends and so on and so forth, that that has been implemented. So a couple of things that has been taking place, we've been meeting with the high school administration, with Joanne Harpo, Jessica Wells. We've had several meetings, also included the child guidance clinicians to, to look ahead to the future here a little bit, particularly looking at the, some of the things that are going to happen in the spring, the anniversary of some, of some of the sad events that obviously took place. Proms, graduations, these types of events to make sure that we have the appropriate plan in place for those. So they have been given us a good counsel in that regard. We also look to do things in the summer. They include things like a presentation by survivors to our young people. And also to do a walk at the high school, both potentially for our students and also for our staff as a way of continuing to support each other and, and the community and our students. So those are some of the areas we are also looking at. With these clinicians, we've been talking about areas of mental health programming at the high school for our students. So there's a potential, you would see some of that come through the budget process as those things are developed. Obviously, we've, we've dragged our mental health, we're very appreciative of that position. We have a couple of people who we'll be interviewing, so we're excited about those. And we'll get that up and running in the next week or two at the latest, because the application process has been open and running since then. So we continue to work with the town as, no later than this morning. Dr. Mark Brackett will come and do the evening for our parents, that's tangentially tied to mental health. So we're, so we're making progress. I have to say that, like, one of my big takeaways from this, from myself professionally and so on, is this, this is just not a linear process. As we move through it, it's a difficult process, it's, it's not straightforward. I, I have to say that I'm greatly appreciative of the clinicians who are serving us and are working to support our, our staff. It's just been, it's just been tremendously helpful as we're on those calls and sort of trying to navigate next steps in, in these processes. I want to like to know that it's thoughtful. It may not always be what community members may, may think it should be or wanted to be, and I understand that. But we lean heavily on, on the experts in this particular case to try and navigate us and shepherd us through. So those are some of the updates that I have for you this evening. Be happy to answer any questions. We also had the, yeah, so just the website, I don't know if you've noticed, but the website, there's a page just for mental health on there too. There are opportunities for parents, community members to participate. If we're aware of events, just like this, this past weekend that we collaborated with the town on. There are events there, and there are events that are upcoming actually that are posted on there for parents if they're so inclined to participate or want to see other community events around suicide prevention, mental health, and other topics that they can participate in. So if you go to that website, it's right on the front page. You can see, that'll be a scroll on this as of a few minutes.
Before I open it up to questions, Alan, can you talk a little bit more specifically about what you think the timeline is? Not, not to the, the day certainly, but what the timeline is for this director of mental health and what you see the first steps of that? that role to be?
So we currently have a couple of couple of applicants at the moment, so it can be a rule and application. So we are going to start that interview process. And as soon as as soon as that person gets on board, he or she is going to have to quickly get up to speed with the processes that we have, the procedures that we have, how we actually function and the various components of this particular job. That's the first thing. And I'll also include that person in any budgetary discussions or other ways around mental health. That person is going to jump into these particular discussions and help liaison these particular discussions with these clinicians to start with.
Okay, thank you. More questions?
You spoke about the nonlinear nature of this process. We've talked a lot about postvention and addressing the acute needs and not moving too fast and making changes because it can impact different individuals in different ways. But where are we on that kind of journey, if you will, from postvention to prevention? And seems like they will, they're overlapping, if you will, or.
That's a that's a fair, I think that's a fair thing to say, Mr. Schnee, that that they would overlap. We had the summer in between these, which was for better or worse, we've got a discontinuity in that regard for students. I think that all of our all of our students, not all of our students are at the same place. Some of our students still need significant help. There's no doubt, no doubt about that, right? But there are students who are ready to move on for the they take the next step for them. And the more that we can get sort of into the integration process moving in the right direction, that to me is one of the biggest signs of of getting back into a normal process and the healing process. That to me was one of the takeaways that it may not be all the things you're doing, but are the students getting back to some normality to some degree, right? And their routines and so on, so forth. And I can see that, right? And I think the high school can see that. I'm actually a bit curious if Shana could see that or not in terms of how the I just, I was just asking, how do you feel about students getting back into routines and so on? What how would you describe that? I'd just be curious to.
I think from at least the end of last year, it's going a lot more smoothly. I think it's definitely different to some extent. There is a change in I think more openness to talk about certain subjects when students and teachers too have noticed. And I wouldn't say we're necessarily past, I guess, the postvention phase. I think there's still, I know quite a few students who are still mourning some of those who have passed and who still from time to time to take a break from school. And I think it's it's definitely a slower journey, but.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you. I know I put you on the spot a little bit, but I appreciate that. I think you I think that's a beautiful perspective for for the board. One of the things that we're struggling with a little bit and just navigating is how many surveys and processes that like, because you also what you receive back, can we can we actually handle what we receive back or not in terms of? So that whole discussion we have been having with the clinicians and we're sort of navigating that carefully because there's a variety of suggestions about surveys and so on. So thank you.
So I noticed that the the last paragraph of recent meetings have focused on planned proactively for school milestone based events, graduation yearbooks, anniversary dates, spring events. Those seem to be more broader entire school programs. Are there plannings done for more specifics of beginning of hockey season, a school play or something else which may elicit a response or some kind of reaction from those students? Or is it just broader school?
I think I think that everything's on the table for discussion this morning. The idea of the walk for the students that sort of replicates a little bit like we did this weekend would be a helpful thing. There's certain program, and as I just mentioned about bringing survivors in for the students, we're working also with the student groups in this school for them to guide some of the discussion. But we're also conscious that the students in the student groups provide one perspective versus the other first package for everyone. So it's just a wee work in progress. We're looking at a variety of programming activities and other ways for the students.
Thank you very much, Dr. Adley. Discussion on September twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three financial report and possible action on proposed budget transfers, Mr. Richard Riegel.
We are forecasting a positive balance of nine thousand seven hundred seventy one dollars. The big change is we did put in what the board approved for the SSOs and the Director of Security. Assuming we get an appropriation, then it would refund that deficit that's forecasted within the budget. It also does assume a full year amount for the Director of Mental Health. That is one of the transfers that we have for the board tonight. Assuming that depending on when that's filled in the next forecast, we would update that for a prorated portion of the salary and benefits. But we would expect to pick up another fifty one thousand dollars. All told, the general education RCs are a positive one hundred and eighty two thousand and the special education RCs are forecasted at a deficit of one hundred and seventy two thousand, which is primarily due to the excess cost reimbursement cap. Salaries are forecasted at a positive one hundred and thirty eight thousand seven sixty seven. Salary savings and turnover are slightly positive, though we still have five teaching positions to be filled, so that could swing either way. We are still carrying three lower enrolled elementary sections for savings of one hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. The new custodial maintenance salary schedule is saving fifty one thousand this year. And then we have the Director of Mental Health, which is forecasted a deficit of one hundred and forty seven thousand. And then the SSOs and Director of Security forecasted at a prorated deficit of two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. The operating accounts are forecasted at a slight negative balance of twenty two thousand three twenty. And again, this is the forecasted deficit for the materials for the SSOs. If we get an appropriation, then that would refund that projected deficit. The operating or the fixed costs, excuse me, are a positive sixty three thousand dollars. It is primarily related to health insurance. We are carrying savings from the health insurance packages for those three under enrolled elementary sections. And then we have a positive balance in workers' compensation, property insurance and student accident insurance. Revenue is forecasted at a deficit of one hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars. Again, is primarily due to the excess cost reimbursement. The state budget did cap reimbursement for Darian at seventy percent and we did budget seventy five percent. So there's a loss of one hundred and thirty eight thousand. And then ELP tuition is trending lower at thirty three thousand dollars to negative. We do have one transfer for Board of Ed consideration and approval, and that is to fund the Director of Mental Health. So it is one hundred and forty seven thousand dollars in salary and then fringe benefits of two thousand dollars and twenty four thousand dollars for health insurance. We are recommending taking the full use of budget control at one hundred and forty five thousand. And then the salary savings related to the unfilled teacher resident position.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Correct. So the less revenue you get, it's like having an overage in a budget. So that is a portion of it. And then it's the ELP tuition revenue. So if we don't collect all the revenue we expect, that's essentially an expense to the body. So the forecast right now is based on the projection of what we were going to spend based on the budget. Obviously, when we file on December first, it'll be based on current year expenditures plus the projection from December first through June thirtieth. So it will change once we file on December first, but right now it is based on.
Rich, given that we're about to go and ask for an appropriation that is pretty close to the surplus that we have, what would happen if that appropriation were turned down? Would we, is that, would that number still be around ten thousand dollars? Or would it be more in the short term?
So we would expect to pick up a little bit with the Director of Mental Health, since it hasn't been filled. So that would probably be about another forty. So you'd be looking at fifty. It is only October, so there's still a lot of unknown. They did mention we have five teacher positions that have yet to be filled. So whether they come in higher or lower could swing it either positive or negative. If you have a bad winter, your snow removal and overtime costs can go negative. If it's a really good winter, it could go really positive. So it really depends on all those factors. If you were to make that decision right now, you'd probably be at that, you know, fifty thousand dollar threshold.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. That. We have a motion to approve the September twenty twenty two budget transfers. Sir Cini, second and Mr. Maroney, all in favor? That's Cini, Best, Okman, Brown, Maroney, McCammon, Parent, all opposed. Worm. Personnel report, Ms. Cyan.
Well, you can see it's disappointing that people are still leaving in the middle of the year. The good news is is that we started to post on Indeed. So after a long search to replace one of our athletic directors, we were able to replace one.
Thank you.
Just one follow up tomorrow. Is is it appropriate to put the steps in there from a whether seniority or the years served to just to get a sense, you know, of the amount of experience?
About the people who are resigning?
Correct. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Right. With that, I'll return to public comment. Michelle, please.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening. Would anyone in person like to comment? You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, it's Rob Dyer, Two McLaren Road, South. I didn't come tonight to ask a question. I came to go through this with a cup of coffee and sort of read the statistics and get some of Dr. Tranberg's unique flavor and wisdom around how numbers translate into the lives of kids. And it would be wrong for me in a public setting not to recognize that in the last few years, he's been very generous with his time and his expertise, educating me on many of the things around how we educate here in the state and at the school. And you know, that includes the strategic plan and conversations about that. That includes curriculum and guidelines and decisions about that. That includes unique aspects of children and learning that I'm not expected to be as aware of as as he is with his expertise. And of course, teacher latitude and guidelines and supervision. So I thank you for that in a public forum. I appreciate it. Hope I'm not wearing you out too hard. I may go to Dr. Adley and ask him to spread it around a little bit. But with my remaining minute, I have to react to this mother of second grade children. I found that to be a very difficult and disorienting moment to observe and very difficult for her to express her emotions about something that was important to her. So I thank her for that. I also thank you guys for providing a forum where that can that can happen, right? Because I think that's an important function. My follow up to that is much more procedural. What do we do with that? What is the follow up to a parental concern of that specificity? Do we publish to the parents where that was sourced, how that was sourced, whether that was recommended, whether it's approved? I don't even, I don't even know, I don't have an opinion. But is there a practical response in this heightened environment where there's so many issues that parents are challenging or in a vacuum being concerned about? What is our follow up to these parents? And how specific do we get and can we get? That's my question.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Michael Burke, fifteen Lake Drive. Nearly six years ago, I was so very fortunate to be in this room when Tara Okman began her service on the Board of Education. I'm privileged and a little sad to be here for her final meeting. Six years, part of that time as Chair of this body. Any rendition of her considerable achievements I could list would certainly be incomplete. But there is one real fact beyond any measure of dispute. Tara Okman leaves this board and this district in far better shape than she found it. It's because Tara has always been prepared. She's always had perspective. And she's always asked the right questions and attempted to do the right thing and put children first. So on behalf of my family, I know that I appreciate all of Tara's work. And I know I can speak for many other families when I say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else in person?
Hello, my name is Pam Roberts, seventeen Edmonton. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight. I was coming because my son's the captain on the cross country team. And he wanted to, you know, support his team. I was really proud of all of them for doing so. My, so I have a senior who's graduating this year, but I also have a second grader who was in that class. And I fell in the royal class that the other mom spoke about tonight. I wasn't prepared to talk tonight, but I really appreciate your questions because I think that that's, I want to know more because we didn't know anything before that book was read. And I would like to be informed and I would like better options for opting out. And we have asked those questions and we've been told no. Opting out is not an option. So I would like a lot of follow up there and I'll be coming back to these meetings. I had one in middle school last year and we had an opt out from a letter we got and we opted out. But I think that we as parents should be informed with the social emotional learning and the DEI. Yeah, I'll be back. I'll be listening and thank you for your questions. I guess that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else in person? I'll move over to Zoom. Ms. Armel Jacobs, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi. Can you guys hear me? I'm Armel Jacobs, twelve Fitch. Sorry, I couldn't come to the first round. It was bedtime routine, but Tara, I want to thank you for your many years of service, not just for the time, but the energy and the sharpness and the verve you put into it that you bring to this space. I think Mike was dead on. There are many times where I'm like writing down a question and before I've even finished it, you are already giving voice to that thought, to that sharp question. So I want to thank you for everything that you have done, all the time you put in, but also just the energy and the attitude and the sharpness that you put into it. So thank you so much for for all of that. I wouldn't be me if I didn't also make a comment on this Julian is a mermaid book. And it is Julian. It is about a Hispanic boy who is running errands with his abuela. And he sees drag queens on the subway and mistakes them for mermaids. They go home while she's in the bathroom. He whips up into an outfit and she comes out and he says, I'm a mermaid. And she, what the book is actually about is that moment, the moment where is his abuela going to shut him down, going to spurn him? Or what is she going to do? And what she does is she says, come on, let's go. And she takes him to the parade. Okay, the the book is about affirming. The book is about being seen and being loved. It is not, and I will say this very clearly, it is not a book about transitioning. There is not a seven year old on the planet that would read that book and be like, give me the puberty blockers. There is nothing in there about transitioning. It is about having the social emotional wherewithal to accept someone and be kind when they put out a bid for affection. That that is what that book is about. And I for one, I'm glad that it's being taught as part of the SEL curriculum because you know, reading this book, it's not going to harm the seven year old. That's not the person. you know, reading this book, it's not going to harm the seven year old. That's not the person who's being harmed. It's the older kids, the kids who are in high school, in middle school, who are questioning, who are gender fluid or who are full on trans or who love someone who was full on trans. They watch these meetings too. I know because they've told me. Okay, they watch them and then they walk away being like, this is not really a safe place for my friend. And I'm glad that they're teaching this in second grade, so by the time my kid gets up to that point, there are people in that person's class who have the social emotional wherewithal to be kind. That's what I have to say. And thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no more raised hands at this time?
Yeah.
That, we have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Seamy, second, by Mrs. Okman, all in favor?